I would like to call the Tuesday, May 16, 2017 Papillion City Council Meeting to order. I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Ms. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Florence, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Cluke, Stube, Ingberg.
We've got the honor of having Boy Scout Troop 463 with us tonight. They're from Saint Paul United Methodist and they're going to come up and lead us in the pledge. Gentlemen? Thank you very much. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
That's correct.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. Get a couple of presentations tonight. One, Gabe Godsey. Did I see him? Come on up. Gabe is with Public Works and this is Public Works Week and we've got a proclamation we want to give and I'll give it to him on behalf of all the employees. But before we do that, I understand we had -- Public Works had a statewide convention and a rodeo out in Grand Island and part of the rodeo was how skills testing and coursework and how they can handle big construction equipment. We had two guys that went out there that have only been with us, what, less than a month maybe? And they had good showing there, but Gabe himself took second place and third place statewide in how to operate a backhoe and a loader. So, pretty big competition. So, we've got great people.[131.16][131.16](APPLAUSE). So, on behalf of myself and the city council, I want to give a proclamation. Whereas public work services, infrastructure and facilities are of vital importance to a sustainable community and to the health, safety and well-being of the people of Papillion. And whereas such services, infrastructure and facilities could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Papillion Works professionals, engineers and administrators who are responsible for must plan, design, construct, inspect, maintain and operate the public work systems essential to serve our citizens. And whereas the support and understanding of an informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operations of the public work systems. And whereas National Public Works Week was instituted in 1960 by the American Public Works Association to call attention to the importance of public works and community life. Whereas the year 2017 marks the 57th anniversary of National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, I, David P. Black, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Papillion, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st to 27th, 2017, as National Public Works Week. In the city of Papillion, and I do hereby urge all citizens to take due note of the observance and to recognize the contribution that public works personnel make every day to our health, safety, comfort and quality of life. Thank you.[213.51][213.51](APPLAUSE).
Want to say a few words on behalf of the employees? I just want to say, working for Papillion is a great opportunity. We have the best management, the best council staff. I mean, it's a really enjoyable place to work and I really enjoy it. Thank you.
That's our appreciation.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you again.[239.98][239.98](APPLAUSE). I'm going to stay up here for the next couple of items because then I'll be coming back up. Next is the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Glover? Second by Councilman Gaines. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? It's kind of difficult. I don't see anybody coming up unless you guys see somebody sneaking up, let me know. Any council discussion? If not, please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F1. Resolution R17-0099.
Mayor Black. We skipped a presentation.
Oh, wait. So bad. We've got another presentation. Mr. Russ Ziebe. This is a very special one. I got ahead of myself. The Papillion Volunteer Fire Department, PVFD, Inc., as you know, for decades and decades and decades, provided the fire and EMS service for Papillion until we moved to full career just in the last decade. And that organization and those volunteers are still around doing some great work while they're not responding to fires, are still involved in public safety. And Russ is the president, well, not the president, but here on behalf of the organization, is here to make a presentation. Russ?
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, thank you and everybody. I want to introduce a couple of people with you that I've got with me tonight. I've got a couple of my members, Fritz Weis, Mike Nuzel and Dan Fuller, in there with us here tonight. But I've got one really special person here with me tonight that I want to introduce to you and that's Mary Dirks. I had a tough time convincing her that she couldn't give a 30-minute speech when she come up here tonight. But Mary's husband, Cal, unfortunately, left us a few months ago. Cal was a classmate of mine through high school. Cal and I were the last class to graduate from Papillion High School. And the next year, they had a pretty rough crowd coming into that graduating class, they said, in 1972. And they changed it to Papillion-Lavesta when Steve was in that class. But Cal and I, our folks worked together and everything else, we're friends. Cal went on his career, was a retired Omaha police officer and unfortunately passed away from his injuries from a fall right around Christmas. Cal's wife, Mary, and son, Matt, asked that the donations be made to PVFD, Inc. We made a decision that we wanted to do it in memory of them and their children and one of the groups, is Mike here? Mike, there's Mike. I'm sorry. I thought they said he was late with the storm. One of the groups is the Junior Titans Football League. Come on up, Mike. Is the Junior Titans Football League, is that correct?
Yep.
Out of South High School and their kids both went to Papillion South. So, Mary jumped on that right away. And then the next one, Dan Hoynes came to us and asked for one AED for the golf course. Through the donations and the memorials, we were able to purchase two for the golf course. So, we have two AEDs to present to the city for the golf courses and one to present to Mike. If it's okay, I'm going to present Mike's first with the Junior Titans Football League out of Papillion South High School. So, good luck. Hopefully, you never have to use it, Mike.
Thank you. So, everybody knows this one's going to go into the stadium at Foundation Field and it'll be kind of partially a donation for us to give to the program up there for use, hopefully never for use.
Good.
Yeah. So, thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike.[480.81][480.81](APPLAUSE). And I said the other ones, Mayor, go to you for the golf courses. And again, I know, I think they had to use one of the golf course, didn't they? You know, I hope it's there if it's needed, but again, hope it collects dust and never has to be used. But again, we wanted to do that. We wanted to do it in Cal's memory. And like I said, those of you that knew Cal, Cal was very unique. That's an easy way to put it, you know, there. But he did a lot of, both for the community, grew up down on South Adams Street, graduated from here and lived here all of his life. So, in his memory and living on, you know, with Mary and Matt in his memory too. So, thank you, everybody.[529.12][529.12](APPLAUSE). I know we just passed the $52,000 mark at Papillion School District. We've provided one at every school in the district and have a commitment to them every time they build a new school, we build. And I think we've at 40 some others. So, we're probably in the 80 to 90 ballpark that we've done, both with community buildings, churches, daycares, Trinity Village, assisted living, some of the places like that. I know you were involved with us with one of the churches when we did that. And we're still continuing. I've got a couple of requests, you know, still waiting. So, anybody we can help, we'll do it. Thank you, sir.
Want to say anything?[577.12][577.12](LAUGHTER). Thanks. Thank you very much. Again, those have been used, so greatly appreciate that. Next is item F1. Resolution R17-0099. A resolution to approve the appointment of Christine Myers as city administrator. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R17-0099?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Stube?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have any proponents? Anybody want to speak on behalf?[611.82][611.82](LAUGHTER).
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Dan Hoynes, H-O-I-N-S, resident taxpayer, 1009 Creighton Road, Papillion, Nebraska, here to support the nomination of Ms. Myers.
Any other proponents? Seen none? Any opponents? Want to come up?[644.12][644.12](LAUGHTER). Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Welcome and congratulations. Now, do you want to come up and take the oath of office?[661.12][661.12](APPLAUSE). I state your name.
I, Christine Myers.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Nebraska.
And the Constitution of the state of Nebraska.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
And without mental reservation.
And without mental reservation.
Or for the purpose of evasion.
Or for the purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of the office.
Perform the duties of the office.
Of city administrator.
Of city administrator.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And I do further swear.
And I do further swear.
That I do not advocate.
That I do not advocate.
Or am I a member of.
Or am I a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow of the government.
That advocates the overthrow of the government.
Or of the United States.
Or of the United States.
Of this state or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
And that during such time.
And that during such time.
As I am in this position.
As I am in this position.
I will not advocate.
I will not advocate.
Nor become a member of.
Nor become a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.[777.87][777.87](APPLAUSE).
But I have to have notes. Yes, all right. Mayor Black and council members, thank you for the opportunity to serve as your city administrator. I appreciate your trust and confidence. I would also like to thank Dan Hoynes for his support and guidance as well as his years of service as Papillion City Administrator. Equally important is a special thank you to my family. My husband of 34 years, Dalton, my daughter, Casey, my son, Nate, my son-in-law, Kyle, and Callan and Connor. Callan and Connor, do you want to come up here? I have something for you. Callan, here's a pin of the city of Papillion. Connor, a pin for the city of Papillion. Papillion is truly a great place to live and a great place to work. It's an honor to serve as city administrator for a community that I love. I'm extremely fortunate to have a very talented group of department heads already in place. They provide me the support necessary to continue Papillion's successful growth. Thank you. I will work hard to meet your expectations and those of the citizens of Papillion. Thank you again for the opportunity to serve as your city administrator.
Congratulations.[885.12][885.12](APPLAUSE). She had a 23-year job interview. Finally got the job, so. People are not aware, Chris has been with us, with the city for 23 years, was started as a city clerk for five or six years, moved into the city, assistant city administrator. There was a period around 99, 2000 where she actually was the interim city administrator and during that period of time actually got the highest award from Sarpy County Economic Development for her work on economic development back then. And then that's about the time Mr. Hoynes became the administrator and now she's getting the keys to the city. Driving the bus. So, congratulations again. Next is item F2. Ordinance 1764. An ordinance to amend Section 205, 249(c)(4) of Chapter 205 zoning. Article 36, off-street parking, having to do with the parking of recreational vehicles on a single lot in a residential district and to provide for an effective date. Give a quick statement and then we'll go into the motion. Knowing that there may be some amendments coming forth and there could be several of those, we're going to take this pretty slow and deliberate. We, a number of committee meetings, we had the public hearing last meeting where we listened to the public. Tonight is for council to discuss, make amendments, debate, make a final decision on what it will be. And so, realizing that there could be multiple amendments coming forward, again, we're going to go pretty slow and deliberate so people really understand this item has this action and in the end, what is the item we're actually voting on. So, if we get into any issues related to Robert's Rule of Order, be looking to Carla's city attorney to guide on that, but I don't think we'll, I think we've got a pretty good handle on that. So, with that, do we have a motion to approve Ordinance 1764? Motion by Councilman Stube?
Second.
Second by Councilman Florence. Now that there is a second, I am going to ask as part of the slow deliberate process, Mr. Mumgarth, you're the chairman of public safety, right? I'm going to ask for a report from the Public Safety Committee who's been working this and we have been publishing to the community that there are likely three amendments coming from the committee as committee amendments. So, I'll ask you really for a committee report and then offer up the First Amendment that the committee is offering.
Okay. The Public Safety Committee has met many times on this ordinance over the last several months. We met most recently on May 8th last week to discuss the testimony and ideas that were offered to us during the public hearing last, at our last meeting. As a result of that meeting last week, we took several votes and have some recommendations on further modifications of amendment, of ordinance 1764. I realize that there are three amendments listed on the agenda or the staff report. The recommendations of the Public Safety Committee are built into those listed amendments. I will just kind of summarize what came out of our meeting last week. With regard to the First Amendment, Amendment Number One, which creates what's called the box method, as listed on the staff report and as originally discussed, it imposed a box that was 20 feet long, basically, to assist in both enforcement and clarification and understanding of the ordinance. Basically, your recreational vehicle or trailer needed to fit within that box, that 20-foot long box, in any of the yards, front, interior side, street side or rear. At our meeting last week, we discussed, first off, the measurement of how do you determine how long, whether something fits within the box or not? And principally focusing on some testimony that we had heard last meeting. For example, somebody who might own a 17-foot trailer with a four-foot tongue. You know, tongues are typically four or five feet in there. We discussed whether it really is necessary to serve all the goals to include the tongue in the measurement. And the Public Safety Committee recommends, decided it really wasn't that the tongue, that is, that portion that is at axle height, is an incidental part of the vehicle, of the trailer and need not be included in the measurement. And so, Amendment One, the box method, will include that modification from when it was originally discussed. That is, there would be a 20-foot box applies, that applies to all the yards, but when measuring whether a trailer fits within that box, we don't measure the tongue. So, therefore, the 17-foot camper trailer would fit within the box. Anything up to about 20 feet, up to the 20 feet, would fit within the box. Keeping in mind that the amendment does not, does not treat a fifth-wheel or a gooseneck trailer as having a tongue. The tongue has to be at axle height. So, the Public Safety Committee is recommending that Ordinance 1764 be adopted with Amendment One, that box method. Secondly, we discussed some testimony we heard about what do you do with Class B or Class C motorhomes that are currently legal to be parked or do not have any restriction as to their length to be parked on a, on the residential lot. Initially, a waiver process had been recommended that would waive or allow those motorhomes to continue to be parked on residential lots if the owner came in within 180 days and got this waiver permit. And originally, the amendment only applied to that trailer at that address for that person. So, if that person wanted to upgrade and get a new trailer, the waiver wouldn't apply. They would have to go park someplace else. After hearing some testimony about that, the Public Safety Committee recommends that that be modified and that the waiver only apply to those premises and that person, that homeowner. So, that the homeowner now who has a Class C typically motorhome that is lawfully parked on their driveway can upgrade that motorhome, get a new one and park it on their driveway. That waiver would apply to the new motorhome. And so, Amendment Number Two is written in those terms. We discussed Amendment Number Three, which is the loading/unloading characterize. It talks about the amount of time that an owner of a prohibited vehicle or trailer can park that vehicle or trailer on the driveway or on the premises. There have been a lot of discussion about how long is permitted, how long should the ordinance allow a prohibited vehicle or trailer to be there? The Public Safety Committee is recommending that that time period be set at five days in a calendar month so that, you know, an owner could have their trailer or their RV or their, any of the prohibited vehicles could be on the driveway or on the premises for five days in any combination, five continuous days, five times, one a day at a time or whatever in a calendar month. So, the Public Safety Committee is recommending that Amendment Three be adopted with those We also discussed what yards, you know, whether there's a difference between what's permitted or prohibited in the front yard, side yard, street side yard or backyard. And frankly, there was a motion made to allow a 30, you know, basically have a 20-foot box in the front yard, 20-foot long box, and a 30-foot long box in the side or backyard. That was discussed and that ended with a two-to-two tie, so the Public Safety Committee is not making any recommendation on that. Similar, there was some discussion about allowing a 30-foot box in the backyard if the trailer or vehicle arrives in the backyard directly from an alley or street. That was discussed. That was tied two-to-two, so there's no recommendation being made on that term at all. Before we go on, before I make any motion with regard to Amendment One, I think Councilmember Gaines has a motion he'd like to make.
Yeah, I was going to, I was going to make a substitute motion and I know this probably isn't normal, but I'm assuming that Councilwoman Cluke is not here due to the weather and I was going to make a motion to table this item until the next meeting so that we could have a full council here.
Just going to take a real quick break. I just need to double-check Robert's rule to see if a motion to table requires a second and if it's a debatable item. It is not a debatable item, so we will look for a second and then we will take a vote and it is a majority vote. So, the motion that was made is to table. I'm assuming that's, is it safe to assume that's to a date certain, which is the next council meeting?
That's fine, yes.
Okay. Is there a second? Motion fails. Original, be back to the public safety to finish up the report and make its First Amendment.
Okay.
Mr. Gaines, can you turn your microphone off? Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adopt, hang on a second. To adopt amendment, what's listed on the agenda as Amendment One, the box method that would create a standard maximum dimension of 20-foot long, 20-foot in length, 12-foot in height and 10-foot in width for permitted parking of recreational vehicles and trailers in residentially zoned districts. That is, that would apply to all the yards, front, interior side, street side and rear. That the measurement of the, of what fits inside the box would exclude appurtenances such as spare tires, bike racks, air conditioning units, satellite dishes and would exclude the trailer hitch so long as they are the type that attaches to the rear of the pulling vehicle at or near axle height and is not a gooseneck type or a fifth-wheel type hitch. I would so move Amendment One.
Is, we have a motion for Amendment One. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Stube. Mr. Ingberg?
Yes, I'd like to make a Amendment Two, Amendment One pertaining to the length of the specified in Amendment One. I'd change it from 20 feet to 35 feet. I'm not going to get involved with the box locations, those types of things because as it stands right now, I'm going to leave it just as it is, that 35 feet would apply to the front side and rear yard. So, the only thing I'm changing is the length to 35 feet.
Clarify, you mentioned 30 initially and then 35.
35.
35.
Yeah.
So, we have an amendment to amend Amendment One to change from 20 feet to 35 feet. So, do we have a second on the amendment to amend?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Council discussion on the, just the amendment to change to 35. Mr. Mumgarth?
Okay, I'm going to vote against the 35 feet and I'll tell you why. The 20 feet and some, some people have seen the 20 feet as being arbitrary. I don't think it is arbitrary. That one of the goals of the ordinance in and of itself is to prevent safety concerns that arise when the whole driveway or large portion of the driveway is taken up by a stored parked vehicle. That presents a safety, several safety concerns. One, you know, of course, if you have a vehicle that is long enough, it goes out into the sidewalk and perhaps out into the street, but principally the but principally the sidewalk. And that presents concerns for anybody who's, you know, kids or other people who are coming down the sidewalk. Secondly, any vehicle that's parked in a driveway presents a visible, a vision obstacle to people coming down the street. They can't see who's in the driveway. They can't see if kids are coming out. They can't see if balls are rolling out into the street. Secondly, people who live next door, you may have a circumstance where a neighbor has a driveway just 20 feet away, because that's the minimum setbacks. And that neighbor now is trying to back out of their driveway, and they can't see what's coming because this obstacle is in the neighbor's driveway. Those safety concerns then lead me to think that, well, 20 feet is about as far as, as long as we can go because the typical setback of a front yard or driveway in Papillion is roughly 30 feet. That is, 30 feet from the sidewalk generally to the house. You know, and I live in a typical area of development of Papillion, and I went out and measured that, and yeah, to my somewhat surprise, that's roughly what the distance is in my front yard, 30 feet. And so the 20-feet measurement basically splits that into thirds. And so a permitted parked vehicle could take up two-thirds of a driveway and leave, you know, at least approximately 10 feet there at the end of the driveway between the obstacle, the vehicle or trailer, and the sidewalk. So that these safety concerns get lessened because there is space there at the end of the driveway that is not obstructed. And my fear is, if we go beyond 20 feet, then we've lessened and lessened that freedom space where people can see what's coming, people can see what's going on in the driveway. And so I'm gonna vote against extending the length from 20 feet to 30 feet.
Mr. Jaworski.
I don't know how this is gonna pan out, but I can support the 35, changing it to the 35 if they're parked in the backyard or the side of the house. And I'm with Mr. Mumgarth. It's hard to support something that's gonna be taking up the whole driveway.
Real quick on procedure, because that's an important point. Each amendment that comes up, the amendments to that amendment need to be germane to that topic. And so we will address each amendment that's on the floor. And since, I don't need, I want some confirmation of this, since Amendment One doesn't talk about locations, it's just talking about the structure of the box, that'll be the topic on the floor that we're voting on. But that does not prevent later on a motion to talk about locations of the box. But this one right now, we wouldn't add location to this amendment. And I know that'll confuse your thing a little bit because you want to tie them together. But for the process, though, they're gonna remain separated.
Okay, that works.
Okay. Mr. Ingberg.
Well, thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. I wish I would've had a chance to explain the reason for my amendment before people had already decided, before they heard my reasons. But nevertheless, I'll do this as quickly as I can. Let's kind of admit to ourselves, the only reason we've been discussing this for several months is because one individual decided to go around the neighborhoods, primarily in Councilman Gaines and my ward, to seek revenge because they were angry. Freely admitted that's why they did it. If that had not happened, we probably wouldn't be sitting here discussing this topic tonight. But that said, as you most of you know, April 14th, the previous city administrator, Dan Hoyds, agreed to change the way we enforce it with some suggestions I provided so we can, in the future, avoid people being able to drive through neighborhoods and make complaints against citizens or their property without there being some tie to them, affecting their quality of life, affecting them. I will give you all the details of that. It also wiped out all the current complaints against anyone that had complaints filed against them up until April 14th. Think about it is, I don't believe anybody, or at the very least, majority of the people that had vehicles that exceeded the 20-foot limit, I don't think they did it with intention of violating the city ordinance. If you talk to those folks, or you've all gotten emails from them, primarily what I get back is, they checked parking regulations, didn't see anything that addressed it, any restrictions, came to the city, got a pad, permit, poured a cement pad, thought they were doing everything legal. Most of the people that I spoke to had parked their residence for years, no one ever bothered them, nobody ever complained, nobody ever told them they had to move them. I think they assumed that everything was just fine. Well, then this occurred, and now it's not okay. I will tell you that in the two-year period prior to this situation, there were eight complaints against RVs, and not all those, by the way, were related to size. You know, myself personally, I can only remember one time in 25 years anybody ever complained about RVs to me, and that was due to them trying to park it on the street all the time. But I will tell you when, you know, but here we are. You know, and the safety committee, I commend all the time and the work they put into this. But when we had the public hearing, it kind of reminded me of some things, and I gotta thank Councilman Jaworski for this. He was very smart, and then he asked everybody that testified that night what size RVs were. I think that was a good education for everybody. And because he was asking that question, I walked away from it, reinforced the fact that 20-foot isn't realistic. RVs are 20 feet, very few are. And if they're not realistic, let's be honest, if it's not realistic, if we leave it at 20 feet tonight, then what we're really telling people that own RVs are, we don't want you parked in residential areas. That's what we're really telling them, if we want to be truthful about it, if we leave it at 20 feet. I don't see much point in passing something that, the minute it's passed, most people can't comply with. You know, that doesn't make any sense to me. If you really don't want people to park RVs at their residence, then some future date, some councilperson should put it on the table and vote for it, or against it, prohibitive or not. Rather than just say, well, 20 feet's okay. I understand some of that logic, but most of it, I truly don't. You know, we've talked about not wanting to store vehicles at homes and so forth. You know, I've got a gentleman that lives a block over from me who's got a beautifully preserved, older truck, larger truck with stock racks on it, perfectly licensed, perfectly runnable. He can operate any day he wants to. But 99 cents of the year, it's just parked in his driveway. He stored his vehicle there, but we don't bother him. Why? Because we choose to say that that's legal. The other thing is, you know, anybody that's concerned about safety issues, if we have site issues now, whether it's an RV or a duly pickup, whatever the case may be, we address it through safety. We address it from the aspect of safety orders that we have under books that would prevent such things. And when we talk about the encroachment on sidewalks and so forth, it doesn't matter what kind of vehicle you have, you're not allowed to park across sidewalks, period, no matter what it is. So I think we can address that issue. You know, we talk about changing this, and I understand the logic of some of you that have the Bs and Cs have been legal all along. What doesn't make sense to me is, that may be the case, but if we're going to change the ordinance in some fashion, why are we treating people with trailers any different? You know, I don't care whether you have a motor or a piece of equipment or not, length is length. And I don't think it's fair, all due deference to those of you that could come and get a permit if the original motion passes. I don't think everybody, we should treat people different ways. If we're gonna allow a certain type, and the only difference really is it has a motor in it to park, we ought to let everybody have that size and park. I don't think, I think you're penalizing people otherwise. You know, the other thing is, and then I'll be quiet and hear what everybody else has to say. But the public hearing reminded me of something else as well. It's always difficult for us, we sit up around this table to cast votes. We wish we had more information from the public than most of the time we ever get. And the bad part about it is, most of the information we get tends to be one-sided. I'll never forget my very first night on the city council. I was lucky enough to be sitting next to the current, the city council president at that time, really good guy, knew his way around being a city councilman. We had an issue that night on the council meeting agenda. It was similar to an RV situation. We had a public hearing, a lot of testimony. I don't even remember what it was now, it's been so long ago. But back in 1992, we didn't have emails to speak of. We didn't have social media, a lot of the ways to get information out to people that we do today. But we had a steady procession of people, like the other night, come to the podium and express their opinion. They were all very similar, if not alike. No one got up and spoke on the opposite side of the issue. I leaned over to the city council president, I said, how is somebody supposed to vote when you only have, you only hear it from one side? And the answer he gave me that night was true then, and I personally think holds true today. The city is obligated to provide information to citizens in whatever way they can, whether it be, back in those days, by media, by newspaper, by radio, by television. Back in those days, we also provided written information to city halls, public libraries, and so forth, to try to get information out to people and be transparent about it. But he looked at me and he said, but you also need to understand this. If you're a citizen of a community, you have an obligation and a responsibility to know what's going on, to gather information, to learn what's going on, to participate. He said, if the city is making their best efforts to educate people and you choose not to appear to a public hearing, if you choose not to express your opinion by letter, by phone, by email, whatever, to city council members, how do you expect them to support your position? They don't know it exists. And in this situation, I will tell you, this has had more exposure than probably any other issue we've had in a long time. We put it out there, it's been on social media. Some councilpeople have provided media appearances and so forth. So the information's out there about this. I've gotten one call from somebody that objects to increasing the size or to do something differently. He would support 20-foot or getting rid of everything. That's one person. So I ask myself, do I represent what I know or do I represent what I think I know? Well, I'm gonna represent what I know. I know that 20-foot doesn't seem to work. Anybody that thinks that it's worked, it hasn't. It hasn't worked because we wouldn't have all these complaints all of a sudden. What's happened is, we passed an ordinance in 1995 that made it 20 feet and forgot about it, basically. I mean, your neighbors were complaining to us. At least they were to me, and they must not have been to the city. So that tells me that I may get swapped by phone calls if this passes tonight. I may get swapped by people calling me objecting to having 35-foot RVs in the driveway. Or a couple councilpeople pointed out to me, well, if you do that, we're gonna have all these people bringing their vehicles out of storage and parking them in neighborhoods. Maybe they will, I don't know. But I can't make amendments and vote on something and support something based on a guess. So with that, I would ask the fellow council members, if box location aside, that they will at least provide, the people we heard from, not what they wanted exactly, certainly, but I think will satisfy 90% of the people that spoke to us, give them an opportunity to be law-abiding people and allow them to enjoy what they've purchased and to be fair, logical, use some common sense. Thanks.
Just a real quick commercial. They do have severe storms in the area. We actually have a power outage in Sarpy County, about 7,000 people. But we do have a backup generator, so if we end up losing power, just wait a minute because it will come back on, and we will continue the meeting. But on that note, Officer McClanahan, I'm assuming you're kind of monitoring the weather channels in case there is an emergency of any kind? I appreciate that. And we do have downstairs, if something would come up, down in the basement would be our emergency shelter. I want to clarify one item that I made to Mr. Jaworski. The committee amendment number one defines the box, establishes the box, talks about the location of the box and how to measure the box. The amendment to the amendment is the length. That's what's on the table, that's what we're discussing. As soon as we resolve that specific item, we are open to another amendment to the original committee amendment. So your thing, if you want to tie these back together before a final vote, will occur. So we'll resolve the number, and if you want to talk about locations, you would be free to make another amendment at that point. But let's stay on the length. Mr. Stube.
Okay, so I agree with Mr. Jaworski from the standpoint of the location. I support the box method. I'm receptive to increasing the length, but I have real concerns about the location, so.
We'll take that as a subsequent amendment, if you want to bring it forward.
Okay, so I'd like to make a substitute amendment.
Not yet.
Sorry. My concern is.
I've gotten some training today on Robert's Rule of Order.
Okay, good. So my concern.
What we're gonna do is, we will stay, and I understand there's a concern, so let me talk it out, the process.
Okay.
We, we're not gonna allow, and I think it's according to Robert's rule, it's not just us making it up, you can't have an amendment to amendment to an amendment. So the amendment that is on the floor is the item we're gonna discuss and vote upon. Once that item is resolved, either way, we now have an amendment that has been amended. We can now accept another amendment, which would go to the location. Does that make sense? So back to length.
My concern. So I have an issue with the length in the front yard. If I support the length, the potential is, if I make a substitute motion to something that's already been approved, the potential is, is that my concern will be voted down.
Alls we have done up to that point is amended the original motion, the original amendment. So after we play out all these amendments, what we have is the original public safety amendment, which has been amended. Then we will have a final vote on that. So if through the series of amendments, it doesn't address your issue, there is the final vote on the amendment as amended, and you can vote that down. Does that make sense? Okay. So back to length. Council discussion on length. That's the amendment that's on the floor. Mr. Florence.
There you go. So I looked at this and have given it, you know, considerable thought, and I'm going to vote against this, and it's a very simple reason why. 35 feet, I think if I read, and maybe the planning director can confirm this, but the setbacks in the front yard in Papillion is minimum 30, is that right? And then in the backyard's minimum 30. And so if I have those right, then a 35-foot motorhome would exceed the minimum setback in the front yard and the minimum setback in the backyard. So I think 35 feet is excessive. And as I recall, looking at the numbers from the last council meeting, the majority of the folks, their trailer, their RV, their vehicle would have fit underneath 30 feet. And that was probably 75 to 80% of everybody that stepped up. I have other concerns as well. So I agree with Mr. Emberg that, you know, part of this was an enforcement issue. And so people come up and they see RVs, motorhomes, and they think, I can do this. And the city didn't do a great job of saying, no, you can't do that. I think we addressed that in the Second Amendment. You know, I do believe that, you know, when you talk about storage and you can say, well, people should be able to have those. But yet, then I have to start to say, well, okay, if you. But yet, then I have to start to say, "Well, okay, if you go down that path, then what about the person who has a non-operating vehicle? We have an ordinance against that." But then would they say, "Wait a minute, I should be able to do that." And so the logic kind of falls apart, and I understand the difference between those. And I think some of the other amendments do go to address the majority of the concerns of the folks that stepped up and, and spoke to us last council meeting, and so, uh, I'm going to vote no on this and wait to go through the rest of the process and see if we haven't addressed the majority of the concerns.
Do you have any other council discussion on the motion to amend the amendment specific to length of 20 to 35? Seeing none, please vote on the motion to amend 20 to 35. A yes vote will extend it to 35.
Can we restart the vote on that?
Vote again, please.
Five yays, two nays, by Florence and Mumgarth.
So the amendment one is amended to 35 feet, so we're back to the amendment now as amended. If we want to talk location, that would be an appropriate time then to bring an amendment up regarding location.
Okay, for me to continue to support this, I do, I, I would rather see this be in the backyard or on the side of the house. If it stays in the driveway, then I'm not gonna be able to support it. So, my amendment is, for this to pass, is it needs to be parked on the side of the house or the backyard. Is that right?
Before I ask for the second, I'm gonna look to Mr. Sturzma, uh, 'cause I think what you're communicating is an intent, not exact language of the motion. So I want to look to Mr. Sturzma, is that intent clear enough to draft the actual ordinance? And then can you clarify from a planning perspective what that, what that means?
So one, one thing I would ask is just to be clear on which yards you, you were referring to. So we have, um, the front parking zone, which is the front yard, we have a side yard, and we have a street side yard, and we have a rear yard. And that's, that's, that's one clarification in terms of the side and the street side. If your intent is both, then, then, then just make sure to say both. So we, we have two different types of side yard. And, um, most lots just have regular side yards, but a corner lot, um, where you have a street on two sides of the lot. The, the longer portion of the yard that's adjacent to a street is the street side yard. And our ordinance specifies side and street side, and so they're treated, they can be treated differently. So I would just ask that if you are making a motion to propose a different box size um, in yards other than the front, clarify whether that's side, street side, and rear.
Okay, then I'm gonna go with... Go ahead.
Let me, let me just ask procedurally, real quick. Um, you started to make a motion, and I interrupted to make sure we were clear on the intent of that. Are you turning the floor over to him to make a motion?
Look, I'm just gonna stop with street side and backyard.
Front or other than front? Is that appropriate?
Um, you, you could say all yards except the front, and that would cover all the other yards.
There you go, all yards except the front.
Restate, restate what your intent is.
Turn your mic off. For me to support this, then, I'm, I would amend the motion to all yards except the front. Right?
So you're saying a 35-foot box in all yards except the front?
Yeah.
And that, and that the front would remain 20? Is that the intent?
Okay. Is that intent clear enough from your perspective, Mr. Sturzma? Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Discussion on the, on that specific amendment. Mr. Mumgarth.
Well, I need clarification on what we have done based on Councilmember Enberg's motion. Now, as I understood the motion, his motion was to amend the box in all yards to be 35 feet long. And that passed. So we are now talking about an ordinance that has a 35-foot box, front, side, street side, and back. So why do we need to now have a second motion to have, I mean, so does, does Mr. Jaworski's motion then remove the front from that? And if we, if we then vote to approve this, we end up with 35 feet everywhere except the front and 20 feet in the, in the front?
That is what I believe the intent of that amendment is. Is that correct? Is that what your intent of the second was, Mr. Gaines?
Yes.
Okay.
So yes, that's what's on the floor.
Well, if I want to get to a point where it's 35 feet in the back, but not in the side, it's 20 feet in the side or front, how do I get there? What kind of a motion?
We will, you would vote down his motion, uh, and then make a, make a new one, once this one's decided.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other discussion? Mr. Glover.
You know, I, I'm in, in favor of this motion. The, the only thing that, when I looked at it, I think there should be some type of restriction of how far forward the camper can be on the side yards. And I, I was, I was thinking, um, that it would not be able to protrude out more than six feet, so that, basically, it's not, it's not all the way on the side, all the way to the front sidewalk. And, and I can live with, with amendment as it is, but I would like to see it possibly be where it can't protrude past the house more than six feet on the side.
We'll take, we'll take that as a separate amendment then, after we decide this issue. Any other discussion? Mr. Mumgarth.
Well, okay, going back to that point, as I understand the planning rules, the side yard ends at the front of the house. So we don't need, we don't need Mr. Glover's amendment, because, basically, if we, if we adopt this, you can park a 35-foot trailer or RV in your backyard. And you can park it in your side yard, if your house is at least 35 feet front to back. Because if it's longer than 30, if you, if you park your 33-foot RV along the side and it sticks out in front of the house, you are now in violation if we adopt this. Is that correct? Because your, your RV has now gotten into the front yard.
So, so to clarify, with the, the motion that's on the table, it, as it's currently stated, you would not be able to have a vehicle longer than 20 feet in the front yard. And so you're correct. The, a vehicle that's parked in the side yard that, um, would be up to 35 feet, which would be allowed under the current motion, couldn't extend beyond the front of the house, because that's where the front parking zone starts. So if we, if we wanted to make an allowance for that, that would be a, a separate motion.
Which is the one Mr. Glover was getting at?
Okay, but I, but I, as I arrived at that point, I don't think we need the, the one, because, you know, we are, if we adopt this, this motion, we've already prohibited what he's talking about. That, um, you, you can't let it stick out in front of your house.
Unless a subsequent amendment comes up to, and to now allow it.
Okay, well, I'll tell ya, my, my preference, Mr. Jaworski, I'll tell ya, my preference is that you can't park a 33-foot vehicle or trailer in the side yard. But, I don't want to go round and round and round. So, I want to make sure that the 20 feet is prohibited in the front yard. So I guess I'll have to vote for your motion to make sure that the 20 feet's prohibited in the front yard.
Any other council discussion? Okay, Mr. Sturzma, I just want to double check, I'm gonna restate it to make sure the intent is known. And so what the motion is, is to allow, other than the front, the 35-foot. If it's in the front, it would be the 20-foot. Is that the intent? That's second? Is that the understanding? Any other discussion? Please vote.
Seven yays, zero nays.
So now the Public Safety Committee Amendment Number One has been amended. So now it is a 35-foot box everywhere except the front, which is 20. If it's appropriate to bring another motion, and Mr. Glover, since you brought the discussion, I'll look to you. Uh, you talked about the protrusion. If you want to bring it, now would be an appropriate time to bring that one forth.
You know, I will, uh, for discussion, I'll bring it, uh, bring the motion up uh, that we leave 35, 20, 35, uh, in all the other side yards and back. And that on the side, it can't protrude more than six feet past the, um, side of the house.
So, again, for me to restate, to make sure we're on the same page, that motion is saying the 35-foot side box can protrude six feet into the front. Is that what you're stating? Mr. Sturzma, is that intent clear?
I'm gonna read that back. Um, so, as you stated, 20, 20 feet remains the maximum in the front yard, 35 in all of the yards. This motion would allow that if a greater than 20-foot vehicle was parked in a side yard...
Greater than 35. So the, what, what we have now approved is a 35-foot box on the side.
Correct.
Which now, the motion would allow that box to protrude six feet into the front.
Correct. Any vehicle over 20 feet, up to 35 feet, could be parked in the side yard and protrude into the front.
Correct.
If it's, if it's 20 feet or less, it already can park in the front.
That's the intent, it's understood. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Gaines. Discussion on that, Mr. Florence.
So, I'm gonna vote against this, and it's, you know, this is pretty simple. Uh, I, I don't know why we're making something simple so complex. So, now we go six feet, I would just ask this question, who is going to go out and measure, whether it's six feet, five and a half, four feet? It is unenforceable, where it's very simple, if you say, "Look, the front of the house is the front of the house, you got 35 feet, you got 35 feet in the back." So we went from, just, just to be clear here, we went from Class B and Class C and no RVs, to now we have Class B, Class C, 35-foot box, front and side. And so we've made huge gains in providing for accommodating folks with RVs. I think that's pretty good. By, by extending it six feet, I'm like, huh, that's an, that's an enforcement nightmare. And so, I have to say no, I can't vote against, I can't vote for it.
Mr. Mumgarth.
Well, I'll, I'll have to agree with Mr. Florence, that, well, look, if you own a 34-foot RV and you've got a typical 40, 45-foot house, if you can't get the full thing back behind the front of your house, then you, you really do need to put it someplace else. That, I mean, in essence, we're almost talking about 51, or 41 feet of permissible use to park your vehicle on the side of the house. Uh, you know, a 35-foot box ought to be satisfactory for anybody who needs to park their RV along the side of the house. You know, almost all the trailers and vehicles that we heard about would fit within that 35-foot. So if we're going to have that 35-foot box, which is almost the length of the house, I don't see any purpose in extending another six feet out into the front yard. And I agree with Mr. Florence that the, the vision of somebody going out there and trying to measure that six feet is, is really problematic.
Any other council discussion? Please vote on the motion to amend, and what we're voting on is the 35-foot side box would be allowed to protrude, protrude six feet into the front yard. Please vote.
Two yays, five nays, by Jaworski, Stube, Enberg, Florence, and Mumgarth.
That motion fails, so we are still back on the original Amendment One of the Public Safety Committee. We are with 35 feet in the, other than the front, and we are still at 20 feet on the front. Are there any other motions to come forward? Mr. Mumgarth.
Yes, um, as we discussed in the, I won't make the motion, but as we discussed in the, uh, Public Safety Committee, we need to deal with the waiver for what do you do with the Class B and C people who currently are legal, who are being made illegal?
Once we take action on this item, then we'll bring that up as the next amendment.
Well, are we going back to 1764 and voting on 1764?
No.
We're voting on Amendment One.
We are still working on Amendment One. Once we settle Amendment One, however that comes out, then we'll go to Amendment Two. Any other amendments on Amendment One? In, seeing none, um, we are now, what's on the table is Amendment Number One from the committee, amended to 35 feet in all yards except the front, which is still 20. That is the motion that is on the table now for discussion. Any other council discussion? Is it clear what we're gonna be voting on? We're voting on the actual committee amendment now, which has been amended to 35 in the front. The primary amendment, number one, that came forth. Seeing no other discussion, please vote.
Seven yays, zero nays.
So ordinance number one, as amended, has passed. It would be appropriate now for the Public Safety Committee to bring its next amendment, Mr. Mumgarth, or any other committee member. Which would be the waiver, if we follow the order. Mr. Stube.
Yes, I will bring up Amendment Two. I, I think, uh, Mr. Mumgarth did a good job from the standpoint of explaining that. Obviously, it's something that, that has been allowed by code for many, many years. People have gone out and expended dollars, most likely they've come in and got permits for pads and things like that. So, what's being proposed here is essentially to allow those individuals that have been in compliance with regard to Class B and C, and for those individuals that have actually gone out and expended dollars, have used a Class B or C vehicle, and so this waiver would go into effect to allow them to come in and get a special waiver to continue to use that vehicle in accordance with the, the current code. And that if they decide that they want to take a 1990 vehicle and upgrade it to a, to a newer vehicle within that same class, uh, they would be allowed to do that. I know there was discussion about, um, only that particular vehicle, but I believe that, as Mr. Mumgarth explained, that, you know, uh, if they want to actually upgrade the, the class, or upgrade it to a, a new year within that same class, that that waiver would also apply to that individual at that residence.
And that is the wording that was in the staff report and has been published. The only thing you didn't mention, but it is in there, and I want to make sure it's in the motion, is, um, everything that had been writing up to this point was a 180-day period, um, for the grant. Is that part of the motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Um, so that is the motion. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Mumgarth. Mr. Mumgarth.
Okay, I'm gonna vote for this, because I think something needs to be done to recognize that we have people out there, as you say, who've made an investment in a, in a B or C, a Class B or C vehicle, principally the Class B or Class C. And, and they're, they're following the law, they're following the ordinance, and I thank them for doing that, whether they're doing that inadvertently or because they actually paid attention, it doesn't make any difference. I thank them for complying with the ordinance. paid attention, it doesn't make any difference. I thank them for complying with the ordinance. How we got to this point of having, you know, the, treating the different camper vehicles differently, that is, a Class A, the big ones are prohibited, but the C, which might be just as big, was permitted, I don't know how we got to that point, but we have to recognize that's where we're at. The goal of ordinance 1764, in part, was to make it uniform. So we don't have people who are very similarly, similarly situated, being treated differently. That is, somebody who's got a, you know, a, a 30-foot Class A, can't park it in the driveway, but a person who has a 30-foot Class C can park it in the driveway. Well, it seems to me, that's an inequity, and we should, we should make it all the same. Nobody over the 20-foot can park it in the driveway, in the front yard. But I recognize that's a hardship for some people, so as a, you know, as a compromise, I'll accept that, well, okay, if we allow this waiver to the people who live there and their property, eventually, we will get to evenness. We won't get there as fast, because they can upgrade, and they might have their new one there, another new one, it might be, as long as they live on the property, they've got the waiver. It won't get to evenness as fast as if we say, "No, it's for that vehicle only," but we'll get there. And so I will accept the compromise and vote for this motion.
Mr. Florence.
Yeah, I think, even though I think our, our first vote took care of most of this, I, I think, going back to an earlier comment, if, if, if people made an investment and they came in and they got a permit for a pad, and, and they thought that what they were doing was legal and enforcement did nothing about it, well, you know, years later, I don't think it's appropriate to come back and say, "Oh, you can't do that now." So I think a waiver for those people who made the investment, who believed they were certainly doing the right thing, I think that should be accommodated. So, I vote for this.
Any other council discussion? Not that I want to draw it out, not that I'm looking for any, but I wanted, I said I'm going to go slow and deliberate to make sure where you've, we've gotten everything. Are there any amendments to this amendment? Seeing none. Seeing no other discussion, please vote on Amendment Number Two.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes, so now we have a waiver process on the ordinance 764. It would be appropriate, if you want, for Public Safety to bring its next amendment, Number Three. Mr. Mungard.
I think I'll leave that to Councilmember Florence.
Mr. Florence.
Yeah, I think, you know, in talking to RV owners, what a number of them said was that a 20, or 48-hour period to come in and prep a RV motorhome at the beginning of season just wasn't realistic, that whether you're cleaning it, or, you know, whatever you're doing to prep it, you know, 48 hours was not reasonable. Same thing at the end of the season, to bring it back and get it prepped and ready to go into storage, two days just was not reasonable. So, this amendment is to expand that to five days in a given calendar month. So that allows someone to go, get their RV, get their motorhome, bring it, park it, prep it, and they have a week to do that. And then they can come back and, and again, when they get ready to prep it for storage for the year, they can have it in, in their driveway for five days as they get it cleaned up and do all those, all the maintenance they need to do. So, this amendment changes the amount of time it can be in the driveway from 48 hours to five days.
Is the intent of that motion clear? Is there a second? Second by Mr. Stube. Mr. Glover.
This, this, so I'm clear on it. This means that if you had a 35-foot camper set beside your house or in your backyard, you could bring it out, set it in the driveway for up to five days in the calendar month, and prepare it for whatever reason, whether it's cleaning, washing, or, or repairs of some kind. And then you could move that back to your side yard or your backyard. Am I clear on that? So, so I guess what I'm asking is that anything over 20 feet can sit there for five days a month. Is that right?
That's my understanding, but Mr. Sturzmann, would you clarify?
So, the, the unloading and unloading period would apply to any vehicle that doesn't fit in the box. So if it fits in the box, you can park there legally at any time. If it doesn't fit in the box, you have, as this is written, five days per calendar month.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Again, are there any amendments to that amendment? So the amendment that's on the floor right now is the five-day cali, five calendar days in a month for loading and unloading. Are there any amendments to that? Seeing none, seeing no other council discussion, please vote on Amendment Number Three.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. I believe that resolves all of the public safety amendments. So now we have ordinance 764 as amended. Are there any other amendments to come forth? Mr. Mungard.
Okay, now we're ready to vote on 1764 as amended.
And I will recap what that is.
Okay, well, you know, and I'll, I'll just briefly say that, all right, there's been a lot of discussion.
Before you, before you do that, let me just ask one more time.
You go ahead.
It's kind of a last call. Any other amendments? Mr. Gaines.
I just have a question. I know that Mr. Mungard covered this one before we started, but have we amended to not include the tongue in the measurement for trailers?
That is in the original Amendment One.
Thanks.
And it also talks in the height, the satellite dishes, there's some specific language on what is excluded in that original amendment.
Why don't you recap where we're at before we have council discussion?
So, we have ordinance 76, 1764. Amendment One has passed, but it's been amended. Amendment Number Two has passed without amendments. Amendment Number Three has passed without amendments. I am now looking to see if there are any other amendments, and I'm going to do a last call, and if there are not, we are now on 1764 as amended, as amended, as amended, and I'll do a recap of what that is, and we can do that discussion and vote. Okay. I see no other amendments, so now what is on the floor is ordinance 1764 as amended through the committee process and tonight. And so what has passed is Amendment Number One, which established the box method. All yards except the front, it was amended to 35 feet. The front is still 20 feet. Amendment Number Two establishes the waiver process for, so for the next six months, waivers can be applied for. And that does allow for an upgrade, so if somebody buys a new trailer, they fall within the waiver. And the loading and unloading has been established at five days. That is ordinance 1764 as amended. That is on the floor. That's the discussion. Is that clear, Mr. Sturzmann?
I, I want to just clarify one thing, because I've heard it said a few times tonight, that the waiver that would allow a vehicle that's legal today to continue to be parked is for Class B and C motorhomes.
Correct.
It does not apply to trailers.
Correct. So that is the discussion that's on the floor. Mr. Mungard.
Well, you know, I won't beat the dead horse. I, I'll just say that, okay, I think we've come, this isn't where we started, this isn't where I was hoping we would end up, but we've come to a pretty acceptable end point that still applies to 20-foot limitation to the front yard, which I'm satisfied with. Because, as I've said many times, well, many times, let's go back, this is the fourth time in my service as a councilmember that I've voted on restrictions of RVs and trailers in the front yard, and I think I have been consistent throughout that time to some extent, and said, "No, you should not store," don't say park, don't say, you know, service, you should not store your, your, you know, your camper, or your trailer, or your RV in the front driveway. That the front driveway is uniformly considered by people in, in Papillion as not being a storage lot. That what you do in that driveway has, first off, safety implications, such as I mentioned, but it also affects the quality of life of people who live around you, pass by you, in the same way that, you know, we regulate a lot of quality of life issues. We don't, we, we heard a lot about freedom to use your property, but we regulate a lot of use of the property. We don't let people play their music at midnight as loud as they want. We don't let people, as indicated, put junk cars in their front driveway. We don't let people let their grass grow to three feet tall. Those are all regulations that we have that affect quality of life. And, you know, in fact, we go so far as we regulate what pets people can have, because the council has decided that some pets have an adverse impact on the neighbors. Well, I'm convinced, and always has been convinced, that these, these obstacles that sit for months and months in a driveway has a similar impact on the neighbors. And I'll tell you, at one point, there was some discussion that indicated that maybe we were taking a guess at whether there is an impact there. And I'll tell you that I'm not guessing. I have personal experience during the time I've been a councilmember. On three occasions, I have been approached by residents of Papillion who told me they had a problem with one of these obstacles in a neighbor's driveway, that they hated it, it affected their quality of life, it kept them from doing things that they wanted to do, and I know some people say, "Oh, that's baloney," but I, it happened. On three times, and I said, "Well, okay, you know, go next door and tell that person." No, they weren't going to do that. That their life had been adversely affected, but they were not going to go next door and make that neighbor angry, get into a neighborhood fight of any sort. And I fully understood what they were talking about. And they were asking that the city step in and protect them against that burden that was being placed upon them by their neighbor. And three times, that has occurred to me. I have personal experience going to such a neighbor and telling him that his boat was a violation of certain regulations, and he made it very clear where he thought I could put that boat. And I understood why that poor lady that lived next door to him was not in a position where she could go and tell him what she, he was doing to her life. And because of instances such as that, I have always been convinced that that is the proper role of the city, to step in and take care of a problem like that, so that you don't have acrimony within the neighborhood. And so I, I am not looking, that this is a guess, that we are just doing something theoretical. We are not. We are taking care of the people who live near and around these obstacles, but who can't do anything about it themselves. They just grit their teeth and dislike it. That is not the way that you ought to live your life in Papillion. As I've expressed myself, I have, I have a boat that violated the ordinance. That boat did not stay in my driveway, because I was convinced that's not the way to treat your neighbor. And so I'm glad to, for the fourth time, vote to protect those people. People I represent, who have made it very clear that that's what they think should be the rule in their neighborhood, and they think that should be the rule throughout the city. And I'm going to represent them and support ordinance 1764 as it has been amended.
Any other council discussion? Mr. Stube.
Yeah, I also plan to support it, and I don't have the longevity that Mr. Mungard does, and, and so there's been a, a lot of discussion back and forth relative to this, and, and I hope that we don't have to bring it up again in five years, 10 years, or whatever it is. Hopefully, that what we've done tonight is got to a point where we've tried to address some of the concerns and issues by the people in the crowd. But, but I also agree, and as a, as a homeowner that's lived in Papillion for over 20 years, is that when I buy a house, I don't expect to be buying a house where somebody's going to be storing an RV. I don't expect to be buying a house where somebody's growing their grass three feet high. I don't expect to be buying a house either where somebody's got dead storage of a vehicle in their front. So, I accept the fact that we need to have ordinance to try to do just the exact same things that Mr. Mungard talked about, is, is to allow those residents to use the city as a way to address those particular concerns. And so, once again, I, I plan to support this, and, and I do appreciate all the comments and, and discussion that's been provided by the citizens, and hopefully that I won't be getting calls from constituents because of the, the change that potentially will be voted on tonight. So, thank you for that, Mayor.
Mr. Glover.
I just want to weigh in. I'm very proud of this council, because I think we did come full circle, 360 degrees from the start of this thing, sat on the Safety Committee, and, and it was tough going through the process, but I think at the end of the day, this council did listen to the people of this community. While we didn't give in to every, everything, I think we made a, a policy that can go forward from here and last for a number of years. So, very proud of the council for doing that.
Any other council discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just a clarification. Okay, one more thing that was talked about during the Public Safety Committee was, what do we do to overcome the, what was, what has come out as the fact that many, many people didn't know we had this ordinance? I mean, we had a lot of people who told us that.
Very good question.
And, and I understand that some sort of an informational flyer of some sort is going to be put in the water bill, so that what we have done here will be clear to everybody, the people who own these, these vehicles and trailers, and the people who may live nearby. So, you know, that, that's been a bad situation, when we found that there were real estate agents that were misleading people, where there were people who had been misled, people who, you know, were trying to do the right thing and didn't know what they needed to do, because the ordinance was so hard to understand. So, could you assure us that that will happen?
Our easiest mass communication is the water bill. We're very careful what we put in there, but we will use that as a mechanism to communicate this. We'll also do some of the social media and some of the other things, but no matter how much we communicate, there will be ones that don't get, that, I never saw it, but we will put it in the water bill, because that hits 100% of the homes. So we will do that. Any other discussion? Please vote on ordinance 1764 as amended tonight.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes, so then, the waiver process will be put in place, just for the people that are here, that are watching this on TV. That will be, the waiver process will be handled through the Building Department. I think they've already been thinking on how that works, so just come up to Building, and then they'll work through that waiver process. Any other, were there any other committee reports? I don't think any other committees met the last couple of weeks. Any comments from the floor? Seeing none? Any council comments? Just a couple things from the last couple of weeks. We did have a couple of ribbon cuttings. Veterans Moving Forward, a great organization in Papillion that is actually working with homeless veterans and getting them into apartments, and starting to get their lives established, had a ribbon cutting, La Petite Paris, the French bakery, had a second ribbon cutting. They added a bistro, so they have dinner on Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights. Also attended the Bellevue Chamber, and Plattsmouth, Bellevue, Papillion, and La Vista, we gave updates on what's going on, because they're starting to see this as a, a little subregion from Plattsmouth to La Vista, and so we gave an economic development update. Dare graduations are in season. I attended St. Columbine Hill. Mr. Glover attended Trumbull Park. Lion, Chief Lyons, thank you for that. And then the Chamber, Sarpy Chamber had their State of the County event tonight. This morning, Mr. Mungard and myself attended that, got some good updates on what was going on. I think the biggest story from economic development was the update on the sewer for the southern part of Sarpy County, which we all know is an important part of our development, and then met with the scout group tonight. So, any other council comments? So, any other council comments? If not, do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Glover?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote.
Seven yays, zero nays.
We are adjourned.